All word of late. Operating any? Friday.
Yes, good morning. Excuse me. Director Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chair Kush.
Here.
Chair Russell.
Here.
And currently, we have Directors Jed Smith and Monty Schmidt absent. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Uh, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Um, Director Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kush.
Hi.
And Chair, uh, Russell.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment on non-agenda matters.
Yes, we do have one. Um, that is Mr. Phil Sauter.
Happy New Year, Phil.
To you. Um, yesterday I was talking with a friend and asked her if she knew how much water she was using. She said she didn't, but that she tries to conserve in that her bi-monthly bill was around eighty dollars. She said she pays her bill online and doesn't recall seeing her daily usage as I do on my paper bill. Uh, she left me a message later in the day that her average daily usage is eight gallons. That's a really remarkable job of conservation, and I wondered uh, why that information wouldn't be more front and center with a note of appreciation. It might be nice to display that information in large type so that online folks who make a real effort to conserve water would know that they're noticed and appreciated. Uh, speaking of customer communications, I believe someone at the last board meeting asked uh, what would be a good symbol or image to represent what Marin water means to its customers? For me, Marin water has always stood for quality. I've tried and I can't taste any difference between what comes out of my faucet and what comes out of a bottle of Crystal Geyser spring water. Living close to the watershed, I've always associated our water quality with the pristine watershed that produces it. It's a watershed that in addition to providing high-quality water for human consumption, also provides high-quality, non-treated water for other species. I think we, excuse me, I think we can all be proud that our watershed supports the southernmost remaining healthy population of native Coho on the West Coast. Because of its health and cleanliness, this is also a watershed that attracts many dollars in grants to keep it that way. I believe that water quality is the district's primary value to its customers and that the health of the watershed is the source of that quality. So as an old marketing hack, I'll suggest that a jumping salmon be considered as the image that represents the health of the watershed and the quality of the water it produces. I'll also throw in a tagline, um, Marin water, it's good enough to call home. And while I'm on a roll, perhaps a good theme for our conservation would be a conservation program would be Marin water, it's worth saving. This is a message that's relevant year-round in times of drought and in times of plenty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Um, I might add that quantity matters too. Uh, I'm a quality person, as you well know, but uh, we gotta have the quantity of water too, besides having the best taste.
There are no further speakers.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Call.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
Director Schmidt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kush.
Hi.
And Chair Russell.
Hi.
And there are no speakers for this.
And I see the troublemakers Alex and Mark there, so they gotta be talking to us about the next one, Loma Alta landslide.
Hi, good morning, Directors. Alex and I, Engineering Director here. This morning, I'm accompanied by Mark Kazrae, our Engineering Manager of Construction. He'll be providing a PowerPoint, a brief update on the Loma Alta landslide and North Marin valve clusters. Go ahead and take it away, Mark.
Thank you, Alex. Chair Russell, members of the committee. Okay, so as Alex mentioned, this is a brief update to the board on the Loma Alta landslide and the North Marin Line Valve Isolation Project that the district implemented in response to that landslide that occurred in 2023. And the Loma Alta landslide occurred among other landslides throughout Marin County as a result of significant rainfall events um, in earlier 2023. The landslide occurred in Loma Alta Preserve in an area owned by the Marin County Open Space District. And it threatens the districts, the water districts, uh, North Marin Line. And the North Marin Line is a transmission main that carries treated water from the San Geronimo Treatment Plant to the Smith Saddle balancing tanks. From there, it can go to a number of areas in our distribution system. So this landslide uh, up in the right here, it threatens our, our water main and it presents an opportunity for the district to increase its resiliency and its operational flexibility. And so this is a network diagram. Uh, if you can't see much detail here, that's by design. We're just really trying to show you the complexity of our network, but we're really focused on this area. And just to provide bearings, uh, this is the North Marin Line. It's a leg that provides the treated water from San Geronimo Treatment Plant. Conveys water through the ten million gallons of Smith Saddle storage tanks down to Central Marin and in Santa Fel. At this location, there's a T, a junction that joins with the Fairfax Transmission Line, which conveys water to the Ross Valley in Fairfax and can also be used to balance the Pine Mountain Tunnel and what will be the future Pine Mountain Tanks. And so a failure to the North Marin Line could recall, would result in a shutdown of the San Geronimo Treatment Plant, our largest treatment plant, but also could result in isolating larger areas of our system, creating uh, water service interruptions, which of course we aim to avoid. And so the solution here was to install a three-valve cluster at that junction. And that would allow for backfeeding water from the Smith Saddle Tanks through the Fairfax Transmission Line in the event that we needed to take North Marin Line out of service to perform repairs in response to that, to that landslide.
What is that little red circle that's just downstream of the valve that was just put in? That guy, yeah.
I, I'm not sure. It might be a, a deflection. It's not a typical symbol.
Okay, I didn't understand it either, so I was asking.
Yeah. And this is a map that essentially shows that same configuration. So the North Marin Line runs east-west along uh, the Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and enters the Loma Alta Preserve where it conveys to the Smith Saddle Tanks. And then uh, near Old Railroad Grade, a fire road in that preserve, there uh, is a T where we have the Fairfax Transmission Line that conveys water south. We're showing the existing valve configuration here. So these existing valves date back to the early 50s. And the slide occurred at this location. And under our current configuration, we'd have to close all three of these valves to perform a repair. And that would essentially isolate not only San Geronimo Treatment Plant, but Smith Saddle Tanks and the Fairfax Transmission Line, which would create significant strain on our Bon Tempi Treatment Plant um, to provide water service to the central Marin area. At the same time of this Loma Alta landslide, there was another landslide in Novato that required reduced service and even shutdowns along the North Marin Aqueduct. That aqueduct conveys the water from the Russian River through Sonoma County into Marin. So that exacerbated the, the consequences should the North Marin Line fail and it increased uh, the risk to the district, further justifying our project. So that project was relatively simple. It was to install three 24-inch butterfly valves with a T structure, replacing the existing T at that junction. And of course, it provides uh, essential uninterrupted water supply during various events, not just the Loma Alta landslide, but earthquakes and other circumstances. It's a key component of our risk mitigation and disaster preparedness strategy. Uh, and it's also a key component of our water system master plan, which recommends that we install these valve clusters at major transmission junctions.
That's a good idea.
Thank you. Um, so uh, we ordered, we pre-ordered and pre-assembled the valves uh, earlier in 2023, and that's shown on the photo to the right. And on October 10th, we dewatered our system and, and the district worked collaboratively with our on-call capital construction contract uh, contractor to perform the installation. The installation was performed in a continuous manner until water was restored that same day. And the project was budgeted for 200,000 and the total actual costs were about 114.
Where are the operators located for the valves? All buried?
Uh, they're, yeah, they're all buried and they're basically, there's a gearbox on the right or on the side of the, the butterfly valve and it's actuated in kind of the same manner that we've seen.
No, I know how it works. I'm just concerned more about its location. Um, I mean, direct burial is a little tricky, huh? You know, corrosion and.
Yeah, we do have a catheter protection system in place and, and uh, so that's accounted for and there is aluminum tubes.
It's all coated to it.
Correct, yeah.
And we also applied a tape coating as well, the 30-mil field tape coating. And so uh, the district continues to monitor the North Marin Line. Uh, we perform leak uh, monitoring on that line to make sure it's not compromised. We're also monitoring the, the existing landslide for any further movement that might result in further impact to our North Marin Line. And we anticipate that the county will perform repairs uh, the summer, uh, this summer. And we are also, we also procured and are prepared to install temporary bypasses around the landslide should we need to in the future.
And I, I didn't notice a thrust block there, so you're just depending on the other pipes to push back?
No, there was a thrust block. We, we had a concrete thrust block on the backside of that T.
Okay.
Okay, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one more. Um, did you consider putting some flexibility in when you had this thing torn apart, you know, because I could have seen possible for a joint at each of these three locations to give a little movement?
Well, welded steel is, is the best restraint you can provide, so you know, in that type of circumstances where it's completely buried, you don't really need that flexibility. Uh, you know, the flexibility is ideal at things like tanks where you might have differential settling with foundations. Uh, so we did not identify a need to, to provide flexibility at the, at that location.
Anything else?
Okay. Uh, so there are a few questions. Um, thanks a lot for, you know, a, a, a a good update on a, on a, on a good project. Um, great to see the cost so much lower than budget. Is, was there anything in the, when you costed it out that sort of, that surprised you in a good way that, you know, or was?
Um, we wanted to make sure that we had budget identified for the work.
Right.
Um, there was no real surprises, but we were uh, as a district and with our contractor, very cost-efficient. Uh, the valves, all the materials cost about thirty-six thousand dollars and our construction work cost about thirty-two thousand. So the remainder was uh, district staff working together and it was quite an effort, right? You have to work with the, the treatment plant to shut down. You have to dewater a major transmission main, perform the work and inspect. And so all of that came out to about 114 and, and uh, we were pleased to see that.
And disinfect.
Of course.
Well, that, 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 that kind of efficiency is great to see. Um, I, I'm guessing because the water is being pumped up uh, there and then it, it shoots down to Smith Saddle or to Fairfax, there's pressure regulators in, in required to manage that?
Correct. I believe we have uh, air release valves at the top of White Hill, but also uh, regulators. Uh, I think they're called the North Marin Regulators that actually provide uh, water level at Smith Saddle Tank, but also back pressure to control pressure through White Hill.
Right.
And, and also down at the bottom at Fairfax Transmission, there's also another regulator down there.
Got it. Cause you, you, you may have seen, um, you know, there's uh, and I'm sure you've heard of this, uh, one of these companies that is putting in um, electricity generators to sort it to, to as an alternative, I guess, to pressure rate valves or in conjunction with. And InLine is one that's now doing a pilot with East Bay Mud around this. And I know there's a lot of complexity in these sorts of things and I think it'd be really important, you know, but it, we'll learn a lot presumably from the pilot that they're doing with East Bay Mud, but just want to flag it as something that, you know, we may, you know, that, that that's something we could, you know, explore down the road, particularly based on what we learned from the East Bay Mud pilot.
Actually, we looked at that, right?
What, what, we, we have over the years looked at micro turbines, where the best locations are. And there's always been kind of a payback in uh, finding the right location. We do have in the strategic plan that you've seen and will be coming back to the board, an element under, in the energy section, talking about looking at micro turbines, I believe, as part of other energy generation opportunities. So I, I do think that um, along with solar, micro turbines is an area for us to update the board and think about it. We'll, we'll track that issue.
Great. Last thing, I, uh, Paul gave me a tour of the San Geronimo Water Treatment Plant a couple of weeks ago, so now I'm unfortunately, I'm the best expert on these things. So sorry, guys. And one of the things we spoke about was, you know, the possibility of different routes for moving water from the San Geronimo Treatment Plant, particularly the tunnel that exists between Woodacre and Fairfax. I think that was originally put in for one of the railroad uh, lines. And it's still there. And as we think about, you mentioned alternatives, you know, uh, for supplying Fairfax or, or redundancy in that supply. I wonder if there's any opportunity to look at uh, routing a pipe through that tunnel, which would also presumably reduce our energy costs quite a bit. So that's something Alex to maybe look, you know, to look into.
We will definitely uh, look at, into that as well.
Thank you.
Now we can take the Pine Mountain approach and flood the tunnel, right?
Nah, not necessarily. We're done with that kind of technology.
I see. Well, the bats are gonna miss us. Yeah, Armando Quintero, which is Monty's predecessor, was uh, really into the micro turbines and he pushed it hard while he was here on the board. The problem, as Ben said though, is it's a little more complicated because you got two parts of it. You gotta integrate to the system, into the, the power system, which takes a lot of approvals and matching up of frequencies and things like that in order to do that. It's, it's not a simple task.
In distance, some of the locations don't have power lines nearby, but anyway, it, it will be worthwhile to provide an update as well as monitor what's going on broadly in the industry and to just take another look at the right time.
Just on that, you know, my impression is there, there is funding for this sort of thing through the Infrastructure Act, you know, the and, and so that, you know, there may be an opportunity there to develop some of this infrastructure and address the, the challenges that we wouldn't be able to address otherwise in the absence of that funding.
I was just thinking about that, where that water's coming from, because as I recall, it's about 600 foot that it passes through there, elevation, coming down to sea level. So we're talking about 300 PSI in that, at the bottom, if you were not to be regulated on its way down, uh, is a lot. I know at my house, I live down below uh, something, circle or whatever, up on the round, round top, something like that, Ring Mountain, yeah. And we get 130 PSI at our raw water, so it comes down pretty good clip.
Mm-hmm.
The gravity keeps working. Okay. Any public comment?
There are none.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well done. Okay, grant funding agreements for Integrated Regional Water Management Program and Wildlife Conservation Board Grant Awards.
Good morning, Committee Member Sean Horton, Watershed Resources Manager. Um, I'm gonna take a moment to introduce you to the district's new grant program coordinator, JP Haylor. And I'll let her give some background into her experience with grants and then we'll introduce this item for you.
Hi.
One more.
One more.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. One of the many new things I'm learning. Um, hello, everybody. My name is JP Haylor. I'm really happy to be here today. Um, I come to the district with 15 years of nonprofit management and a lot of working alongside government and industry, really mostly in workforce development. Um, STEM programming and college and career pathway programming and also.
Where at?
Where at, mostly.
Not the place, I mean, location or your.
Location. Um, regionally, a lot of work in the East Bay in San Francisco and also I worked for a workforce intermediary that did work all over the state of California.
Thanks.
Um, and so, yeah, looking forward to moving the work of the district forward.
Good. So this item before you is a review and refer item for two grants that we would like the Operations Committee to consider accepting and then to um, authorize the General Manager to sign those grant agreements and additional documents to get those in place to support the projects. So I'm gonna hand it to JP to give you a brief summary of the two grants that are in front of you, which is the Integrated Water Resource Management Program and the Wildlife Conservation Board Grants.
Yeah, so the first one, as Sean mentioned, is the Irwin Grant from the State of California, Department of Water Resources for the Marin City-Santa Fel Water Supply Resilience Project in the amount of six million four hundred and eight thousand. And with that, that's with a district match of 1.3 million. Um, the second one of the, is the, we're moving forward the work of the One TAM Regional um, Forest Strategy and that funding is coming from the Wildlife Conservation Board in the amount of four million, two hundred and sixty thousand for the Phase One of the project. Um, and two million, eight hundred thousand of that supports uh, the district's BIFIP plan work.
Good. And I'll just note that um, you know, the grant program is tracking grants as they come along and we're pairing those with projects as they're appropriate. And the Wildlife Conservation Board is a really interesting opportunity for us. They have a forest conservation program. This is the first time the district will access to that grant for the forestry work, so it's a nice new program that we're interfacing with. And we have had past experience with them on some of our restoration work in Lagunitas Creek and we're continuing discussions with them about future phases of Lagunitas Creek funding. Um, but great program. And then Irwin, you're all very familiar from that with the Department of Water Resources and this is a great project to help us address some aging infrastructure and work with the communities in Marin City and Santa Fel District, so.
I'm most impressed with JP's Midas touch. He sits down and, but 10 million.
Yeah.
Just keep it up.
So with that, we'll take any um, questions you may have.
Monty?
Um, no, this is great. I mean, the, the grant funding that we bring in um, is, is so important to our work and keeping costs down and, and I think also is a, a, an incredible vote of confidence from funders about the importance of the work that we do, so um, let's keep it up. I think um, you know, just as, as a, a note for um, those of you paying attention to the state budget and the impacts to some of these pots of money, it's not looking as good as it, as it was in past, um, in the past years and, and a pretty substantial turnaround even in the last three, four months. So um, you know, if we have, if there are any um, proposals that we're looking to get into, you know, to WCB or other um, state funds, um, I highly recommend that we get a pre-proposal in into the pipeline because there's gonna be a, there's gonna be a rush um, of, of folks trying to do that and trying to get in before sort of the door closes on some of these opportunities. So, thank you.
That's a really good point. Uh, we work for DWR and I was in conversation with them yesterday, as a matter of fact, and um, they were warning us, we have a new contract that's about to cut. And they were warning that they had been pressured from Sacramento to beware that the cuts are coming. And it's interesting because in our case, it's a health and safety thing, so we kind of get bypassed that, but not exactly.
Yeah, yeah. And with WCB, a lot of their climate adaptations funds just got a big cut, um, but a lot of the um, other pots that they have are still looking pretty good, so, but um, getting these agreements in and um, quickly is not a bad thing, but in the past um, there have been, um, grants that have not been expended, have been pulled back, so let's get them signed and inked in underway.
Okay. Um, thank you very much for the, for the presentation and JP, welcome to the team. On the WCB grant, that 2.8 million, is that restricted at all for use or can we use it as any way we would like to support the BIFIP? So it is um, to support the BIFIP, year five and year six goals. So we identified kind of priority restoration treatments. So you can think mostly for our forest health work around sudden oak death impacts. That's the type of activity that's identified in there as well as some of our broom management activities and to a lesser extent some of our fuel break maintenance. So it's kind of got the, the suite of BIFIP activities and you'll see some other grants in the next couple of months that we'll bring forward that um, pair up with this one as well. That's great. And if we need to expand the scope of the BIFIP at all, in, in conjunction with this, great. Also, thank you. How's it?
JP, my welcome as well. Um, I, you know, Sean has heard me i- in the past say that it seems like we have at least recently, very good success in bringing in grant funding. So somebody has a Midas touch uh, with respect to that and I think we're all really thankful, so it's great to have you on board to help drive that even further. Um, I think, you know, related to what Monty has noted with respect to tightening of some funds, it would be good to hear at some point how you prioritize the items that you're selecting for grant funding in case there are things that, you know, we want to push higher to, you know, in terms of priority. Either because, because of need or based on uh, the amounts of funding that are, that are available. So I guess it's the strategy. It's, it's the fun, it's the grant raising strategy at some point would be really good to hear about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, any public comment?
There are none.
Okay. Well, like I say, we look forward to the next meeting, hearing similar news.
We need a referral or review.
Okay.
Uh, make a motion to refer both grant proposals to the full board for resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Item D, Water Efficiency Incentives, Flume Program Changes. Hi, Carrie. Happy New Year.
Good morning, Board. Uh, Carrie Pollard, uh, Water Efficiency Manager. So the item we have before you today is an update to our Flume contract. So there's a new pricing structure that's been rolling out for 2024 and as a result, there's a $20 increase in the district's contribution, resulting in a total amount of $136 per device that's purchased. Fifty percent of that is covered by grant funding, thanks to our grant team. Um, and then the customer cost after installation is $69. There's no additional funding requested at this time. We have over $80,000 in a retention, in a retainer contract with CalWeb. And as customers purchase the devices, that's drawn down. So we feel like funding there is adequate, so the only change is really the increase in contribution. The second component of this item is to include a smart controller as an add-on. So Flume and Rainbird have partnered and if someone purchases both of these devices or has both of these devices installed, they can use the Flume device to review their Rainbird controller settings, meaning what's the flow rate for one zone versus another? Is there an excessive flow? Is there a leak? Those kind of things.
Do they actually talk to each other?
They do. Yeah. So a customer can get online and purchase both at the same time. Um, and they can get a discount for the Rainbird controller and get our $100 rebate, which is what we currently offer. If they don't want to go through Flume, they can just buy it themselves and submit the paperwork. So it's really no change in our program. It's really just more of a turnkey opportunity for our customers.
Does it work with old Flumes too?
It does, yeah, all Flumes. Um, and so those are the main changes and this is a review and refer item um, for your consideration.
It seems to me we probably should have some kind of press release on that to the, at least to the Flume users to make them aware that this option is available, because that's kind of intriguing.
Comms is on it. We've got, it's, it's part of our, our current outgoing messaging that we'll be rolling out. Hoping it goes through with approval.
And I think going back to Phil's question too, Adrian, you know, um, I know exactly the problem you're talking about because we pay our bill online and it is tricky because you don't get the mailer and you don't get anything. You just get the bill. And um, I, I recall there were limitations on the software or something like that that made the online paying and less.
Can we reference our, our bill online, the same, electronically, the same thing as sent paper?
Yeah, so the customer's usage um, is included. It's, I believe, on the second page of the bill, even in the e-bills. Um, but unless you're scrolling through those, um, it's not directly inside the portal when you go into the billing system.
Yeah, and unfortunately, what happens in reality is that it's an amount and you just and it's done, you know, having to dig down, it's different than receiving a bill.
A, a key aspect as we are looking at our SAP Enterprise System Upgrade, the, the modern approach you see in many agencies is like a portal where a customer can get all customer information, billing history, flows, calls. Billing history, flows, calls, the whole thing. So it's standard, it's available. I will expect that that will be an element of the upgrade that will really be transformative as well as there is some efforts to look at the current online bill paying system and make that, there's other systems out there that make it smoother and easier for customers and the like. And we're looking into that as well.
And this is getting off topic of what you're proposing, but it's an important one, which is, is there, I get why, like, you know, it's probably very fast and convenient for people just to see a number and pay. But is there a part of our online billing where we can almost, I don't want to say force people to, but at least like you see your bill and your water usage all in a very close area so that people don't, they sort of have to see both in this.
Well, we could take a look at that as we're redesigning and looking for a kind of upgrade to that entire system. And think about that as we're looking at the options and implementing something.
Great. And I get why a lot of folks are going to want to move fast and just quickly pay the bill, but we also want to have that chance to.
Especially because the bill is so small.
Small in number.
Realm in bills, yes.
Yeah.
I appreciate the effort to look for the technology. I think I'll make a motion to review to the board.
Cool.
Second.
Yeah, great. Carrie, just, are we seeing any change in Flume purchases following the rate hikes?
It's been pretty consistent. We haven't seen an increase necessarily. It's been pretty consistent over the last two years. We have about 300 a year going in.
Any change in activity with the existing Flumes looking back up?
You know, we get some drop off and then we have some new ones, right? So we're sitting pretty consistent at about 2,500 in the service area.
So despite the 300 additional meters on an annual basis, our total number is staying about the same.
Well, that would. Total number of active, none.
Yeah, yeah. Total number of active. That would be an interesting metric to try to push, right? See if we could like get up to 40,000 or so. I'm sure you think.
Well, I think the problem is that they get the information they want. That's why they lose interest in it.
Yeah, I mean.
Because it's only a matter of linking it to your Wi-Fi. I mean, it's not a big task.
Yeah, yeah. But I agree with you, Larry. At some point you see it for a few months and you're like, nah, it seems about, you know, and you let it slide. You don't pick up those leaks anymore. You know, I unhooked mine for the Christmas tree lights and I haven't put it back in. Yesterday, someone left the shower, you know, kind of running at quarter rate, you know, for probably most of the day. And if I'd had it hooked up, I would have known, right?
Yeah.
Welcome to Tier Four.
There you go.
I also too, I just had mine replaced because it went down and I was troubleshooting and it took a while. Flume was really, really responsive to helping me as I was trying to, I was troubleshooting, I was climbing around and replacing batteries and blah, blah, blah. And then they sent me a new unit. But I wonder to what extent, you know, like, you know, I don't know why it stopped working, you know? And so is there a service life on these? And should we, is part of the reason why we're consistently, we're putting more out, but we're basically staying flat. Which means we're losing about that same number a month or a year, however you want to look at it. Is that, is there a way that we can figure out why people are, is it that they got the information and they unplugged it and they just never plugged it back in? Or is it their system went down and they don't know what to do? You do some of the troubleshooting that the app helps you do on your phone. And once you've done that, you're kind of like, ah, now what do I got? Now I got a call, like, you know? Anyway.
So it's battery life is one reason, right? And some people will just let the battery life lapse. If they decide, I've got the information, I found the one leak that was causing my high bill, I don't need it anymore. There's one. The other one is if your Wi-Fi is disconnected from the bridge.
Or you change your router.
They'll send you notifications that this has happened. We also send notifications to customers because we have those lists of drop off as well to say, you know, here's the link to purchase a battery, you know, connect your Wi-Fi, right? To try and get folks back on board. But we do see a pretty consistent about 2,500. You know, it'll go up to 26, 27 and then back down depending on, you know, participation and timing and.
How much do batteries cost?
About 20 bucks.
20 bucks. It's a lot for, and they're supposed to be replaced annually, I think?
So it's, they say their battery life is at least 18 months, but I think it's much shorter. They are coming out with a new version this year that has a dual battery and it's supposed to extend it, what they say is two years plus. But until we're out in the field, we don't, we're not sure.
Perhaps we could approach Flume to see if they would be interested in some kind of subscription replacement.
They tried a subscription and they got no takers. So they've done away.
No takers.
Yep. Or not enough to make it cost.
Interesting to them, huh?
So they did think about that. It's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, so I crawled in there. I looked at my batteries. I tinkered with things. And they were like, it's like four double As that are kind of wrapped in a way, but they're like, oh, these are supposed to be special, but like, I don't know, they didn't look anything special to me. So I still, I tore it apart and I shouldn't have done that maybe, but.
Were they special?
I don't think so. They just look like double A batteries. Anyway, it's kind of too bad that they're not just basic double A batteries versus, because, you know, those cost whatever, 25 cents a piece. Anyway, so maybe some feedback.
More like a dollar these days, but I buy them in bulk and I never.
All these are reasons why, you know, Flume is not equivalent to AMI, right? We get a longer battery life on AMI, right? We have that consistency that we need.
Yeah. Going back to Adrian to just, it's a great question about whether as people are now looking at their bills and feeling the cost increase. And I know I've had people come up to me and talk to me about discovering that they had leaks and other things like, are we, do we have messaging out there? That's like, you know, your bill, you're probably paying more attention to your bill than ever before, like Flume is your best friend at really helping you to understand your water use and.
Only friend.
I think they have lots of, I'd like to think we are.
Only friend in that part.
Yeah.
The water meter, but it's kind of inaccessible, so.
Yeah.
So we have been doing a lot of outreach, both very direct to individual customers, as we've heard from many of them to to help kind of explain their usage and the individual impacts on their bill as a result. And pointing them to our tools, including Flume and our rebates, as well as our Conservation Assistance Program. So they can work directly with our staff when they're having trouble as well. We did just this past month highlight a customer success story that we had as a result of Flume. And that is currently circulating in our on the waterfront bill insert. So going to every customer, we did put it in the January e-news and have done some social media around it as well. And we do have another customer success story, kind of on a similar note, looking at Outdoor that we're planning for coming up here in the spring.
Adrian, I really liked the customer success story. So I've been forwarding that to people that have reached out to me saying, one more nudge to start working with us more closely on managing, getting your water usage down.
Cool.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Well, we do have a public comment.
Public comment.
Yes.
And also, did we make the referral?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, okay, Matt. Yeah.
Mr. Larry Minikis, please.
Yes, good morning. To Adrian's comment. It might help to send every customer in Tier Three and Tier Four a Flume brochure on a regular basis to remind them that they would benefit from Flume if it's not already being done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, update on the water supply roadmap.
Morning, folks. Paul Selye, Water Resources Director. This is a really small screen. It's a really, really small. Then we couldn't see the board. Good morning, committee members. The water supply roadmap update. If I could just make this go to presentation mode. There we go. Okay, without further ado. I guess it's January 12th and we can probably stop saying Happy New Year at this point, but just for the record.
Perhaps. Still happy, right?
Yeah, it's great. Today, we're going to go through, just a reminder, it's been a while since we've done this. So just a reminder for folks what the roadmap is. So we'll review that quickly. And then talk about the early action projects, the longer term projects, touch on schedule, grant funding and a project kind of budget summary. And then close out with some next steps. So we've seen this diagram before, the schematic of our integrated roadmap. And, you know, on the left here, you've got sort of the general category in district improvements, Sonoma Marin Partnerships, local storage, new supply development, and of course, our conservation. And then to the right, you've got the bars kind of indicating when these individual projects, such as electrification of Sulley Pump Station, were scheduled to begin. And I won't go through all of these, but there are some that you'll notice are sort of hashed or dotted. And those are not included in sort of the water supply totals. So if we look at desalination, for example, that's got sort of a striped background, it's hashed. It's not going to be included in the water supply totals that you see at the bottom. Okay. So without further ado, then, early actions on conservation. I know we were just talking with Carrie, so we're sort of picking up here and it's just interesting. I think the black box just circles our April through October period, which is when about 60% of our water supply gets consumed. And you can see these bars here representing the past five years of the residential GPCD, so gallons per capita a day. And you can see that on the right-hand side is 2023. And I think we can say for the most part, our customers over this time period that we're looking at have done a really good job of reducing their water use over time. If we shift then from looking at just that summertime period to looking at maybe August through the end of the year and focusing on 2023 in comparison to the prior year, 2022. We do notice maybe this first sort of signal of a little bit of a bounce back in terms of water usage. So we're just keeping an eye on that as we move forward. For water efficiency, of course, we're working on the master plan. We'll be bringing a draft back to you in February and March for your review and comments. We have, you know, a number of interesting programs and pilots that we're working on, one of which is this sort of high water users AMI pilot. Where we'll go out and install an AMI meter on a high water user account and sort of hook them up and see if we can affect changes. It's one of the questions we have generally of AMI is sort of what's that impact on water use? It'll be interesting for us to see how that plays out. We do want to review ordinances that are appropriate, such as the gray water ordinance. And to some of the discussions that you were just talking about, whether customers, you know, customers struggling with their bills and so on. With Adrian's help and Carrie's input, the team's developing this online tool targeting indoor water use. So it's sort of a winter time seasonal tool that might show up on our website. Where customers can input some data and it'll tell them kind of where they are on sort of an efficiency benchmark. And pop up with some tips for them to do water savings. And you'll be, I think this is going to be rolling out sometime toward the end of the month. And you'll get a more in-depth report, I think, at the COMS and Water Efficiency Meeting at the end of February on this one. That's kind of exciting. And of course, our educational programs coming up in February, there's going to be a landscape webinar. Kind of gearing people up for spring coming and getting them prepared for, you know, water-wise gardening.
Do the higher water users use more water inside too, in general? Are they just less conscious of the usage or is it similar?
I'd have to defer to Carrie and Adrian on the specifics for that, but I think it probably varies.
It's actually fairly similar. It's actually fairly similar when you think about.
Between?
Between even large homes because it's a per person kind of average, right? So when you think of an efficient household as kind of being in the 30s or so gallons per person per day. So 10 people per household, the water use would be higher, but per person, it's, efficiency is the same.
So it's just the outside primarily?
It's primarily outside is the biggest kind of, where there's get the range.
Yeah. Thank you.
And while we're talking about conservation, just reminding our customers and us, of course, that we were talking about all these things that we're doing. We do have a comprehensive suite of incentive water saving programs. And you can find the details of this at MarinWater.org/rebates. And again, a lot of these incentive programs will be reviewed with you as part of the master plan update. Water loss reduction program. So we do have a study that's ongoing and our goal is to reduce real water loss. So there are sort of two types of water loss the state considers. One is apparent losses and that's due to things like systematic errors, measurement of meters and quality of data. And then there are real water losses, which are exactly what it sounds like. It's from leaks, unauthorized consumption and things like that. And ours is hovering around 1,000 acre feet per year. And even though we meet the state standards for water loss, we think that we'd like to improve. 1,000 acre feet seems like a kind of a rich target for us. And so the team is conducting this rather broad look at the entire water loss program, including apparent losses. But the focus for us will end up being on real water loss and kind of looking at an opportunity for us to bring to bear technology in the form of things like satellites. All right, they use satellites to look for water on Mars. And they're starting to do the same thing here on good old planet Earth. And it's not brand new, of course. This has been around a while and it's just one of probably several different strategies that folks are looking at to try to target and kind of improve the efficiency of their leak identification and repair.
We're already kind of state of the art, huh? With the listening devices and all that stuff.
We use the handheld listening devices. But what they're finding is some of these technologies, including the acoustic sensors and hydrants and the satellite stuff, improves that efficiency. It just helps them, for example, a satellite technology might identify a 300-foot stretch of pipe. And so you don't have to walk the mile of pipe. It'll help you pinpoint it. And they're not 100% accurate. So it'll be interesting to see what comes out of this. Just to mention that maybe there is a role for technology to help us improve that kind of efficiency.
You should take a look at the Danish Flowmeters ones, you know, at that, when Sonoma had that meeting.
Yeah.
Each meter has a acoustic listening device. And it's kind of an interesting approach. It's a no moving parts meter. It's fully electronic. And in addition, like I say, they have that listening device on each one. I forget the name of the company, but it's a player in the market. And, you know, it's worth taking a look at. It's an interesting concept. Because it basically gives you a listening array everywhere.
Right, right. And there are others that attach to hydrants and you can move them around and target different places in your system. Anyway, we'll have more details of that coming to an ops meeting. I think February, we're going to try to get an update on this at Ops. Looking at our early actions then, our stream release automation project is moving along. Our goal here, just to remind folks, is to sort of replace this manual process of monitoring streams and adjusting flows. And in order to do that, we need to capture some stream flow data. And we're going to be installing some additional stream gauges to help us with lag time, response times. And then establish rating curves for those new gauges. And we're hoping to wrap this up or at least get the initial kind of algorithm testing going this summer. Right now, the stream gauge has been installed in Lagunitas Creek. If you remember, last September, we installed it and it was liberated. And it was reinstalled with some beefier boxes with a couple hundred pounds worth of old valves.
We got it back?
What's that?
We got it back?
No.
A new one?
New one, yeah. Yeah. But it's.
Highly valuable hocking item, huh?
Yeah. So we, but we've secured the new structure for the data loggers and so on in a big sort of construction chest.
Famous last words.
And added a few hundred pounds of valves. So it would take some effort to move and put a sign on it, just letting folks know that this is scientific equipment for us to monitor stream flows.
I'm sure that'll impact them.
And.
So are these, do they talk? Do they communicate?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it telemeter data?
So it's kind of AMI for the stream, huh? Way of thinking of it.
Yeah, yeah. So we collect this data. It's the same thing, right? The USGS collect this data and they make it available on the web. We're going to be collecting this data and bringing it back to SCADA. And then using that SCADA information, that database to help us create the algorithm to control the flows.
Well, so will this data be telemetered? Will we be able, will it be brought up to CDEC or something like that?
Well, it'll be, it's going to be, no, I don't think it's going to be published. You'd you'd need sort of a password to get to it, but we could, if someone was interested in the data, we could certainly share it.
I mean, stream flow data is just, you know, in general, it's just, I mean, for other scientific work and 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 just understanding rivers and hydrology and our like there's such a paucity of of real time data that like establishing this and then maintaining it and making that data available has a lot of value to to
We certainly could. It it
I I mean, if there's a, if there isn't a reason to keep it private, which I don't, I can't think of what it would be. It would be really great to to get it up and get it available because really there's just, you know, when you look at fisheries restoration work and you start looking, other people who aren't part of our own internal team might look at, you know, some of our fisheries data and our hydrology data, compare it to other, you know, other watersheds. It just becomes something that's a really powerful resource for for others. So I'd really encourage us to get it up. And I don't think it's complicated to get to make it an established gauge that gets up to the California Data Exchange Center.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
And think about talking to GS because, you know, I'm sure they would show interest in it, especially with the problems they've had in the last 30 years with their data management.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. So we're hoping to get the SCADA connection February or March and then pulling this project together once the rating curves are done in October. So it'll be probably summertime, we start maybe playing around with algorithms and things like that. So more to come on this. Switching over to Phoenix to Bon Tempe. So this project, then, for clarity, will be pumping water from Phoenix Lake up to Bon Tempe reservoir for storage and use. We've had geotech analysis of Phoenix Lake and they looked at it in terms of the stability of the side slopes of the reservoir and they're okay. We're okay to pump at about three MGD within sort of a bracket of elevation change. And that 174 to 158 is a pretty decent elevation, you know, that the total, I think, the reservoir can go down to about 150 feet. So we're pretty much nearly at the bottom, all the way at three MGD. And then once you get below 158 feet, we'd need to reduce that drawdown to to about two MGD.
We have some kind of device to avoid sucking in the turtles.
Yeah, yeah. Turtles are smarter than you might think.
Bigger too.
Yeah. Our current understanding is that the the county, and we did talk to the county about this project early on, the flood control aspect of it, they're just simply not sort of resourced at this time in order to kind of really take advantage and maximize the flood control benefit. But I understand there may be an opportunity for us to kind of review how we might want to operate the lake and use the sort of discharge valving to assist with flood control. So that's something we could take a look at. And I know also that there's been interest in sort of energy generation from pumping water up and bringing it back down. And that's been scoped as part of the pump station work. So there'll be updates from from our engineering team as we go through the pump station design on that.
Any any indicators, Paul, as to whether it's looking positive on that front or is it too early to say?
I think it's a bit early to say. But I I wouldn't know enough. I'd have to talk with Alex and his team and get, you know, the sort of inside baseball scoop on that. But I I think they'll they'll have some information for us on it. And you'll see here in a minute, there there's a hydraulic profile, which explains, of course, our interest in looking at this. For now, though, here's sort of the conceived alignment from the Phoenix barge pump, which is in the in the blue water section. So it's a floating pump assembly that we have that would push the water to the pump station and then we'll be pumping up this 18 inch new line that goes up fish grade directly into Bon Tempe reservoir. It's quite a lift. You're going from about, you know, an empty Phoenix Lake level of about 150 feet up to, you know, Bon Tempe at 720 feet. So there's a pretty decent elevation change here and you can, you know, it's represented by this hydraulic grade line that you're seeing for the project.
Paul, you know, I know you don't need to hear me say this one more time, but given that profile, I really hope we can kind of push the limits on understanding what's possible for leveraging that for for
I think that's
Energy storage.
Yeah, I think that that is the goal and included in that scope of work. So we've we've certainly heard the request and it's our intention to take a look at it in terms of, you know, what does it take to get it done? As opposed to, you know, just a kind of cursory look at it.
And and maybe, you know, are there other partners that we could bring in and to get over some of the, there will be financial and technical obstacles for sure. But potentially with the right partnerships, we can lower the barriers on those.
It's a good point. So the project itself, then, of course, is in Northern Spotted Owl territory. And not that we need any education in what that looks like, but there's a cute picture I found on the internet. So I thought I'd share it today, just to lighten things up. It's the kind of a engineering update we're going through today. The environmental compliance documentation is underway. There's going to be a draft, I understand, March or April for this project. And that's designed to kind of support that first phase. Of course, Northern Spotted Owl means we've got limited construction windows from August to February. So that's going to challenge how quickly we can accomplish this project. And it seems likely at this point, the team is planning for two construction windows. So the first will be later this year. We'll be running 1,200 feet of pipe. I believe this is going to be in the tunnel. So they'll be replacing this existing pipe, which condition assessment says was not good. And then we'll be adding a second pipe, which is to fill the reservoir. There's a a fill pipe, if you like, from Phoenix Lake and then a down line that goes to the treatment plant. And then the second phase is is a longer segment of pipe. And that's going to run in August, the following year, August 25 through through January 26. And then sort of parallel with those two construction efforts is the design and construction of the new pumping to support this project. So final completion looks like it will be in early 2027 at this point. So then moving on to the electrification of Sula Huli Pump Station. The goal of this project is, of course, as the name implies, to bring electrical power to the Sula Huli Pump Station and to install 2.5 miles of pipe. If you recall, the existing configuration of that discharge pipe sort of goes to the top of the hill. And then we discharge into sort of an open channel, natural flow for two and a half miles to the reservoir. So there are water losses associated with that. And of course, a number of operational challenges that we face every time we want to use this pump station. Because that flow runs across private property owner lands. So this pipeline will resolve those challenges and allow us a greater flexibility to operate this this reservoir. So we've talked briefly about
Paul, just one, of course, coming back to energy requirements. Again, one thing that had come up briefly the last time that we had a presentation on on the Sula Huli project was the possibility of really leveraging the the height differential between Sula Huli and Nacasio as a siphon to reduce pumping costs. Hopefully, there's, you know, just using, you know, creating a siphon basically. And I, again, just if there's, you know, any opportunity to continue to evaluate what's possible there.
So I I think that's right. That's sort of still where we are in terms of evaluating all of the different options. You know, what you'd be talking about is a tunnel essentially between Sula Huli and Nacasio. And depending on what all our other alternatives turn out to be, you know, if we have to build a new substation for PG&E, that's a very, very expensive proposition. And so that cost would then be, you know, a tunnel might look favorable at that point. But how does that stack up with some of these other alternatives that we've talked about as well? Excuse me.
How far is it?
I I
Mile?
No, I mean, the full tunnel would would probably run maybe three, four miles, something like that.
Oh, pretty healthy.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, you wouldn't be building a, you know, eight foot horseshoe type tunnel. It would be sort of more micro tunnel. So for now, though, we did look sort of briefly at a review of alternative power sources for for the Sula Huli Pump Station electrification. And of course, generators are always an option. And that's sort of where we are today, would be renting generators to power the pumps that are out there. And so a permanent generator could be installed. We did consider solar panels. And of course, floating solar seemed to be indicated just just because the lack of, you know, ground space that we own out there. Yet, as we look at floating solar, really, the only installations that we've seen today are kind of on engineered ponds. These are fairly shallow ponds at a vineyard or maybe at a wastewater plant. And they have well managed pond levels that they don't sort of fluctuate, you know, more than 10, 15 feet. We're operating in sort of a a natural valley. Sula Huli is quite steep sighted. And so when you you'll see fairly dramatic elevation changes, you know, on the order of 60, 70 feet, if we were to draw the reservoir down. So that's not to say that this is entirely impossible to do. But our first, we're sort of, this is our our look at it. And indications are that it would be certainly challenging and costly. In terms of when we look at the demand load that we're trying to feed this pump station, we're going to want this pump station to operate 20, when we want it to go, we're going to want it to go 24/7. It's it, so solar is typically operational when the sun is shining. So this means that if if we could find the area to put solar in, we'd need some sort of batteries. And what sort of size of batteries are we talking about? Well, these these pumps are 800 horsepower at the moment and you see you need a one megawatt. But you'd need it for 12 hours. So you're looking at 12 megawatt hours of battery. I don't know. I think if you've got a really cutting edge design, maybe that's six to eight semi trucks worth of batteries and the pertinences to kind of cool them and things like that. So it's complex. And and then the final aspect, I suppose, of solar is that, you know, the the M2 changed to M3, which affects the kind of credit that we can get. So, you know, we can't treat it as a solar farm anymore. If we were to put it out there, that return on investment would take quite a while for us. And I think, you know, we need to take a look at that and and probably put some numbers to some of these items so that so that we have that information for you.
The last time we had this conversation, I remember you having or someone having great concerns about the category four air pollution control stuff on the diesel, the generators. So indicating that it was probably not wise to buy them because the flux was still there and changing the standards.
Right.
Is that still the case or has the airport settled down on that?
It's settled down for now, but regulations aren't constant as we know. So but
The issue, guys, is that you buy this locomotive sized generator, might fit in this room. And then it gets surplus, basically, because it's no longer able to run under the canoe air standards. So we've been renting these guys at like a million bucks a pop to solve this problem.
Yeah, the rentals aren't that, I mean, quite that, but with the fuel and and operation, they come out at about a million.
Yeah, it's in those numbers.
Yeah.
You know, Paul, when when we were at the San Geronimo Water Treatment Plant, you were trying to explain how decisions are made to draw water from different reservoirs. And there's a process, you know, that based on maintaining certain water levels, prioritizing between the reservoirs versus Sonoma. It's still tricky, you know, very tricky for me to understand all all that goes into that.
Did you take him across the street?
Not yet.
Oh, you need to go see that part. That's where the brains are. The rest is just, you know, the water level's going down, but it's run out of there and you can actually see it.
But I but I guess my my question is, is there any opportunity to increase the draw? Once we have the system in place for moving water more efficiently from Sula Huli to Nacasio, is there any possibility of increasing the draw, for example, in Nacasio? So that we're moving water from Sula Huli to Nacasio on a more regular basis? Not at times of maybe highest need, but on a more ongoing basis. So we're not doing as much pumping in short periods of time, but more pumping over longer periods of time, which may also increase our ability to capture water in Sula Huli because it's constantly being moved into Nacasio. And then, of course, drawing more on Nacasio for our water supply. I'm wondering if there's anything we can play around with there.
There is, and and I hesitate to answer because I I think I know your thoughts on it. But this is sort of how we use modeling, is to test those operational strategies. Because we can come up with any number and test them against a wide range of strategies. For example, should we transfer water to from Sula Huli to Nacasio when Nacasio is 80% full? Maybe. It depends how good your forecasting is six months out, you know, in time of year. So there's just a lot of considerations. It's not a simple answer, but it's a great question.
It's similar to storing the Russian River water in the reservoirs. And then you watch it go up over the spillway.
In a way.
Do you have a number for cost of pumping per gallon?
From Sula Huli?
Yeah, just in general.
It's been a while. I did do that math with the last generator run, but I I don't have it.
The the number that I've used is about a nickel a gallon. Something like that, which is like three times what we sell the water for. So, you know, it's 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 not cheap.
Right.
It's it's cheap in the big picture, but not cheap in the the consumer side.
Yeah, that's another, that's a consideration.
Yeah. Paul, we're still on the the alternative power sources. Is PG&E, are they still taking the the stance of solar is not going to be efficient out there?
I I that was their initial cut at it. I feel that we need to do a little bit more rigorous and take a just a different view of it in terms of what would it take to get it done? As opposed to kind of come up with an easy reason why not to do it. I feel like that's just a little bit more diligence on our part to do and put some numbers to some of these options so that we can truly understand kind of the range of costs that we'd be looking at here and what those trade offs would be.
Yeah, I would definitely support that. I think a a second opinion on that, that someone that's not engaged in selling electricity to us would be a good one too. I don't know if Marine Clean Energy is a place to go or some sort of consulting that are doing these, you know, pretty significant projects throughout the Western United States.
Yeah.
And usually at areas of end ties or end lines that aren't in a normal service area. And the technology and the and the projects are are coming out are pretty creative. And I just would hate to miss this opportunity here to bring in more energy from somewhere else and definitely not the generator piece, but we're pumping diesel smoke in the air either. So.
Yeah, no, understood. And I was talking with Alex yesterday about this. And so we we have a little bit more work to do, but this is sort of our initial cut at their the review of these options. There's more to come. And kind of the blue bar at the bottom, the key word is here that, you know, traditional electric may be the most effective for us moving forward. So that's sort of where we are thinking today. We're not done yet.
Are you looking at engines, right angle drives?
No.
You can have both, you know, you can have the the electric motor sits up here and the engine drives in this way.
Right.
You don't lose the efficiency of generating the power to run it to another motor that eats a certain efficiency. You just take the direct drive. And it's the same engine, you know, horsepower wise, more or less. But you can crank those pumps pretty good with right angle drives.
So if we were to go today, using the constraints that PG&E has provided for the power that's out there now, their load study shows that we can run a combined horsepower load of 800 horsepower, as we talked about, I think, last time.
Yep.
And
Eight one hundreds.
Eight one hundreds, or in this case, we're proposing for 200 horsepower vertical inline. So we don't have, I don't think we have any inline vertical pump turbine pumps at the moment. They're all in cans. So this is just basically you're flanging a pump directly to the pipe. And it's done in other places. And this would give us a flow of around 6 million gallons a day. The last time we pumped Sula Huli, we settled on a flow of around seven and a half. So it's a little bit lower than, you know, maybe what we we pumped last time. And cost estimate range you see here between two and $4 million roughly, with an estimate or an opinion cost of about 2.7 million to put in these two pumps. And I would just say that this is a good solution with the existing electrical. What we need to What we need to make sure is that we don't make decisions today that are going to hamstring us if we have a project coming up down the line. And, and we know we're working on a couple, you know, regional conveyance and local storage projects. We don't yet know what the preferred projects for those will be. We will soon, later this year, May or June timeframe. So I think it's important for us to make sure that we don't sort of put the cart before the horse and just take a step back at the moment. Let's address these issues around alternative power supply options. And then see how this works with our preferred projects when they, when they're, when the board selects those later this year.
So what we're suggesting in this is based on both the interest of the board and our sense that we can do a little more work on solar to really understand it. And I really appreciated how Paul characterized it, to bring to the board what it would take to make it work and see how that looks. And also with the understanding that even though on the prior slide, Paul noted that, you know, traditional PG&E power may be most cost effective, that energy is one of those things where the board from a policy position, like deep green energy, for example, we aren't paying the most cost effective for energy. So we do understand and appreciate that. So we do want to dig deeper and bring that back. And also this issue, understand the preferred project. So we're suggesting it's probably, you know, in the order of about a six month delay on this project from what we had been thinking to deal with these two, the PG&E uncertainties and understanding that issue along with solar.
This is, I know this has gotten to be a complicated issue, especially with the NEM two sunset and the NEM three and the, and the payback rates. I mean, it, it's too bad we weren't doing all this like a couple of years ago and we could get in on the NEM two rates. But, you know, I, I get that, like, I think in general, we wanna, we wanna look at where we can use solar to reduce our energy consumption and whether that is, you know, storing it in batteries and then using it at the time we need it. Or is it putting in a, a solar farm of, so to speak, in some place that makes sense in our, on our lands? And we're just contributing to the system. And in essence, we look at it as a net, you know, a, a net budget of, you know, we're putting back a certain amount, but when we need it, we're pulling it from PG&E and that's more cost effective. I think this has just gotten, it gets more complicated than just the project, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And it would be really great for us, I think, as a board and staff to like, to really think about the solar issue more comprehensively beyond just the project. Because that, it may only make sense to really ask that question about solar and our district when we think about it, you know, in a broader scope.
It, it's a good point. And I think maybe where you were going and I was thinking it as well, it's not necessarily mutually exclusive in this, right? If this is a location, even an extended payback for floating, maybe we pursue it along with supplementing with electric power, if that makes sense. So we do get it that we do need a staff to really dig into this and think broad and really bring some options back to the board.
Great. I think that, I think that makes sense.
That's, that's to that point of not thinking about this on a project by project basis, but more holistically. That's really, that's, that's great. Ben, just, you know, when, you know, invariably, we're gonna want to do things where we run into technical challenges and, you know, can make it seem very difficult or we, you know, are not sure how, how, how that things might evolve in the future. Do, do we have any scope for once in a while bringing in academic groups who might be working more on the cutting edge or theoretical side of some of these issues? To give us, you know, their perspectives on what might be coming down in the pipeline. It could not, potentially it's too far out for us to, to take advantage of immediately, but just to, you know, understand where, where advances are happening that might someday prove fruitful and that could maybe even result in collaborations, grant funded collaborations that of course will not take any staff time at all, but still allow us to, you know, maybe even explore some of these things in partnership.
Yes. There, there's certainly the opportunities out there. And we've talked about the world-class academic institutions that are our neighbors and the interest appropriately to tap some of that. So we are going to be thinking about that more and working, I, I think, talking to you in, in some detail. I, I think we, we need to think about the areas because, right, you know, there, there's no central clearinghouse at Berkeley, you know, so. But who is doing it on energy, right? Who's doing it on the issue that we have interest in? And how do we explore the avenues to partner? So I've heard that it is in the strategic plan. And as we develop the upcoming annual plan, we should really think about that, that first step and what that looks like.
The caution I have here is don't let the perfect get in the way of good. That's my reaction to this. You know, this is, if you've ever been involved with software, you know, this is when the boss says the beta out. Yes, it could be better, but you gotta get it out. And I think that's a bit of what I'm hearing here. So be careful that, you know, there's always changes. And, and I think the other thing that's perhaps harder for my fellow board members to understand is what, oh, even a 200 horsepower motor looks like, but 400s or 800s. And, you know, there's a point where the solar is hard pressed, that you've, you know, hit on 12 megawatts of battery storage. You know, I can only imagine that must cost, you know, $50 million or something like that, maybe more. So it, it's tricky, but I, but I would really give some thought to engines. Engine driven right angle drives, because I think you might find them to be the sweet spot in between. You know, especially, you know, engines are a little tricky when you don't run them. They don't like that. But, you know, we could run these things every so often. The other problem, of course, is that it's, you know, I always think of going out there like you're, you're driving to Oregon. That's what it feels like. You know, it's so far away. I was even thinking while you were talking about putting the cattle in squirrel cages, you know, having them walk, generate the power. Get some value out of them besides. Yeah. Well, yeah.
We're not looking at that often, just to be clear.
So anyway, like I say, just keep in mind that, you know, the first cut may not be the perfect solution.
Right.
You know, you just have to take your chances and do something. And, you know, I mean, I don't know that there's a criticism of what we do now. I mean, I can only remember in Sulehuli like twice in 20 years. So, you know, it isn't very often we do it.
No.
Now partly it's because it's expensive. So it's, it's a little tricky there, you know?
And difficult.
And difficult, yes.
So.
Just to, sorry, on that one, the cost of, when, have we estimated the cost per acre foot? First, I know we have for Sulehuli versus, and I, and I'm comparing it to what we pay for Sonoma water. Do you, what's the?
Sonoma right now is 1455. I, I don't have the Sulehuli number top, off the top of my
Higher, lower?
Oh, lower.
It's lower, yeah. But then you gotta treat it.
Yeah.
Which is like 600 to, to do the treating, so.
I would say probably by the time you're done with Sulehuli, it, it'll be less than, than Sonoma.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it, it, where I would then go is that, that obviously if we're tapping it, if we're able to tap into Sulehuli in a more effective and efficient manner, maybe that helps us to reduce costs by not purchasing as expensive water from, from Sonoma when we don't need it. If, or, you know, when we're impairing that risk.
Paul, before we leave the shorter term, short timeline actions, just on the AMI pilot with high water users. In the past, we've discussed a study that East Bay Med was doing with UC Berkeley on, I think, a related topic. I know it's not necessarily comparable to what we're trying to do. And the research methods may not be those that we think, you know, are best. But I wonder if at some point we can get, you know, a report from them, just understand what they learned.
Yeah, we definitely can do that. My understanding is the scope has shifted a bit in that now they're looking at ways to use AMI without full implementation. So kind of a targeted regional approach to AMI to keep costs down, but see if they can get, you know, 70% of the benefit at 30% of the cost kind of thing. So it is an interesting approach. It's going to go on for quite some time, but we'll, we'll track it and provide updates.
Yes. So just to be clear, on, on Sulehuli, we are proposing that we're, we're going to be moving forward with the design of the discharge pipe that currently overland flows. So that's still moving ahead. That's still a good project for us to take on. And we're just pausing on the electrification aspect while we have a few questions to resolve.
Sure. Well, it's definitely a measure twice, cut once. That part I get. You know, you mentioned the AMI as opposed to the Flume. I've had AMI now for about six years, I think, something like that. And I, I don't deal with it myself, but my wife is pretty good on the phone and she picks it up. And about once a month, I'll, I'll get the bug, you know, how are we doing? So, you know, we do check it to see, just to see, you know, how are we doing? We're not at that 35 gallon number we were, where, but we're only maybe double that. So we're still well below the state's goal. So like 35 gallons per person. Previously, we were at 17 and a half. And 17 and a half, you gotta work pretty hard to get, stay down there. But it is nice to have it, to be available. And, and especially with respect to the fact that, you know, there's no data. It's just blank, right? Between bills. So you don't know where you are.
Yeah. Well, where we are with the implementation of our long-term water supply projects, right? We ticked off the strategy box with the, bless you, the strategic water supply assessment. And we're in firmly in the planning section here. And so our activities in planning, so we, we've sort of set up between these two, these two, so we're talking about regional conveyance project and the local storage projects, right? The, these projects are, all have a common goal in mind, and that's to improve our water supply. So we've kind of harmonized the environmental approach between the two projects. We are refining the alternatives if you, and we'll see a few slides on that in a moment so that they can be differentiated. And we, and we end up with a defensible selection. The team is, you know, jumping around in terms of levels of detail. We're putting together a common mapping base. So if you can imagine the local reservoir projects, if you were just thinking about the dam raises, you might want to know from an environmental perspective, what is the area of impact? And where's the access road for construction going to go? And, you know, that might change and we have multiple different variations of those. And so our team, our, we'll, the district will be hosting this mapping database essentially, so that the entire team can have access to that common set of data. And while teams, of course, are known for working together, we do all go away, right? And hide in our little cubby holes and come up with crazy ideas and come back and test them. So this database will help us do that. Our first pass, of course, our, our first task, our primary task really is to take those numerous options we had on conveyance and storage and sort of screen those down to what we have as proposed shortlists. And we'll come back and share that information with you and make sure that that's all ready to go. We're continuing to work with Sonoma Water to refine their water availability estimates. And of course, modeling through our discussion earlier will help us quantify the long-term performance of the alternative operational strategies. So looking then, just to remind us, what, what are we looking at in terms of conveyance alternatives? I think there are 13 different projects that we've identified. And so our job is to screen this down to three or four viable projects. And we can do that by comparing them against sort of our goals in terms of water supply. And, you know, how disruptive one pipeline might be if you're going to go down the middle of Petaluma Boulevard with a 30 inch pipeline compared to, you know, some side street somewhere. And you can kind of compare these alternatives, but that's part of the definition that we need to, to do and that the team's working with, working on. So I've included, I, I don't mean to go through all of these, but just so that you have the information and can refer to it, all of the different alternative options and the routings for some of these pipelines. And noting that some of these projects address, so for example, these, these are south transmission systems. So this is in the Petaluma to Castagna pump station zone. And that doesn't necessarily become a bottleneck until you address, you know, put a pipeline to a reservoir. Once you have a pipeline to a reservoir, then this project might have some benefit. But in and of itself as a project, it's not going to meet our water supply goals. So what you'll see is that some of these projects are built into some of, you know, kind of, you, you end up with composite projects that include some of these. And, and that's where we think we'll probably be ending up with our selection. Our proposed shortlists will be some sort of composition of some of these other individual projects that were identified in the strategic water supply assessment.
This is all, those guys are all outside of our district. So we're wandering around in places that we don't really have a physical presence. Katati tanks, for instance, right?
Right.
And so Sonoma is cool with us?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, of course, were working with them and the project teams had a tour of the Katati tank site and, yeah.
Ask them to paint Castagna again.
Oh, they are.
Oh, good.
I think it's later this year.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah.
It needs it.
Yeah, it, it's, it's up. So then other options, for example, you know, looking at moving, so North Marin Water District have a pipeline from the North Marin Aqueduct to Stafford already. And there may be some excess capacity in there at certain times. And could we leverage that, kind of go off the end of it? And that's what these options refer to. So from Stafford Lake, doesn't necessarily mean we'd be pulling from Stafford Lake, but maybe we have a tank and a pump station near Stafford Lake that we can then pull water and move it into, into one of our reservoirs.
So that's the pipeline they put water in Stafford with?
Yes.
And I find that interesting because they paralleled the line that comes to us.
No, I think this is a separate.
Doesn't really have a parallel. Yeah, it's a separate line, right? It's not, it's not the
It's a T off of the
It's a T off.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just a feeder.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not a total parallel. Yeah.
I was curious because I wasn't aware they had built anything like that.
Total capacity is like 7.3 million gallons. And when they typically fill Stafford, it's around 4 million gallons a day. So there may be some capacity in there. Cause you know, we'd be interested in doing this, maybe in drought, dry conditions. And they would too, right?
Sure.
So there may be some opportunity for sharing there. But again, it would be some, somewhat limited in terms of how much water we could get. And we need to evaluate that and put some proper numbers to it in terms of cost per acre foot. Okay, so.
Do you know if they bring that in with an air gap then into the reservoir?
I don't know.
Cause it, you know, I'm not a fan of Stafford issue, probably will remember. Tony was funny when I, I said to something about dog manure and street runoff in the first catch, first flush. He didn't like my characterization of the water quality in Stafford, but I thought it was pretty accurate. So, you know, there is a concern about backflow.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure that's been handled appropriately.
I'm sure it has to.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe there's just a device.
Right. Right. And so building on, you know, going, moving from the aqueduct into, from Stafford to one of our reservoirs, we might address that capacity limitation by going all the way back to the aqueduct. Right? And so we'll increase our capacity there, but maybe there's still some constraints on the North Marin Aqueduct. So is there a benefit? And you see this yellow line at the sort of north end of the picture here, where maybe we come off of the wide section of the aqueduct, the new, I think it's a 40 inch line and go down San Antonio Road.
44.
So there's, there's some, some options for us to, to, to figure out here. And in, in this sort of a case, it's possible that that Southern Marin line, right? We talked about the south transmission system, excuse me, about Southern Marin, the south transmission system segment, that then becomes a bottleneck and might be added to this project. So a lot of things for us to think about. And then the, the final set of options then are from Katati tanks, sort of going down the back roads. This would be a completely independent of existing infrastructure, totally new infrastructure. And we could, you know, size this to, to almost whatever capacity we thought was necessary, assuming Sonoma could supply it. Right now, it looks like that number might be around 25 million gallons a day in the winter time. And we're, we sort of And we're sort of crunching the numbers on this. There are a lot of challenges with this sort of approach, notwithstanding cost, PG&E power availability, and a number of other issues that will be considered.
Are you going to talk about Castagna Pump Station today?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to get an update on that. I don't know, the electrical and all that, that, because it seems to me that Castagna could play a very important role in this, of avoiding the construction of a pump station, potentially. I don't know how much lift, you know, pretty big numbers there, so.
Yeah, this option wouldn't work for Castagna, but some of the other ones that we just ran through, Castagna would play a role, for sure. Okay, so this is the conveyance, just kind of refreshing us on what the team's looking at in terms of the sort of thirteen options there. For storage is similar. We've got ten options for storage, from dam enlargements to new dam construction to sort of spillway reconfigurations that we contemplated in the strategic water supply assessment. And we're defining those projects so that we can differentiate. You may remember in the strategic water supply assessment, we just said, well, dam raising, ah, they're all dams, you know, about hundred twenty million each. But when we look at the dams, they are all different. Right? The different construction times when they were constructed, the actual structures are very different. You can see some of that in kind of the colored detail here. As we focus, if we were to look at the green section, this is what's called the core or impermeable structure of the dam. And they're obviously different for each one.
Do you know the dates that go with those? Sulhuli is the latest, the newest one, I think, huh?
Exactly.
So that would be probably seventy-seven, seventy-eight?
I think, yeah. I think seventy-nine. It might have been finished, right, in the seventy-nine, eighty time period.
It's, I think it's around eighty. The urban water management plan that was included in our previous board meeting packet is like this encyclopedia on all these things. It's, I was wondering if we're going to get that as a hard copy.
Yeah, we can
We can bind a copy for you. It's pretty amazing in terms of the compilation of facts around our water system, so really good to have on hand.
Well, people like dam safety pay a lot of attention to these things.
Normally, we stick it on our website as a link as well, but we can certainly print a hard copy. Anyway, my point with this slide is not to get into how to build a dam or how to raise them, just to point out that there are unique characteristics for each one of these and different challenges that we're going to face, and there'll be different costs that come out, and different challenges ranging from how to do the construction, you know, the operation of a water district while you're constructing a dam, to environmental impacts while you're in construction, post-construction, just, there's just a wide range of issues that we need to take into account.
Of course, all those have been faced before.
Yeah.
Because, you know, they raised Kent.
Right.
And so they, there's experience with that.
We, right. And when we look at that prior raise of Kent, if, as an example, we're thinking, and of course, the engineering is not done yet, but we'd have to undo that before we could raise it again. Because, you know, when you're, you're talking about raising water supply, if you take an acre foot of water, I don't know, it weighs two point eight million pounds for one acre foot, we're talking adding twenty thousand acre feet. So these structures that were built to hold, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand acre feet of water, we're going to be asking a lot of them. So that's part of what the engineering team needs to look at, is what needs to be done to facilitate some of these.
Did we ever get an answer to why they raised it to the elevation they raised it to?
It turns out that that was the supply volume that they were looking for.
Okay.
In terms of the increase.
At least you know there's not something else.
Yeah, they contemplated, they said it was value to raising it further in the report, but they didn't. It was just, that was the water rights that they had and what they had calculated that they needed in terms of additional storage.
And Deet and Bill Seeger special.
Yeah. So we're working through the issues on conveyance and, you know, storage to come up with proposed shortlists. In terms of desalination, you may recall our original project goal was to establish the feasibility of brackish water desaline near the Petaluma River area. And the early results that we told the board about was essentially the water that we found from reviewing data sets was just not that brackish. And it was considered to be part of the local groundwater basin. So we revised our project goal to determine the sort of feasibility of desalination in the area around the Petaluma River nearer the bay. And the team is currently in the process of looking at, sort of on a desktop level, whether we can identify a subterranean channel that can be used, you know, as a hydraulic conduit from the bay to feed potentially a desal plant. And we'll have a, the team's going to conclude that analysis in February, so I think we'll be back to the board with some more details on that in March. I don't have any previews as to what they've seen, but there's a lot of sort of desktop analysis that's going on now that, and
Can I let you finish?
I'm
Okay, so, so by being closer to the, to the bay, we would functionally would not be drawing from the groundwater basin to the north. It would be drawing almost exclusively from the bay.
We think that's right, yes.
Okay.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Blue mud is everywhere, look like. I don't see much hope for that. It's possible, but it's a stretch, I think.
Yeah. So then, looking at our long-term projects, the conveyance, storage, and desalination schedules, we're still looking at having preferred project alternatives selected in around the June timeframe for the conveyance and probably July for storage. And at that point, we'll, of course, have come back to the board a couple of times. Desalination, as I mentioned, the desktop update will be completed, and we'll bring that to you guys likely next month, maybe March. I'm hoping for next month. Grant funding, we had a nice report from Sean and earlier, and we have our two million dollar DWR grant, just an update on that. We mentioned we'd sent in the invoices for the strategic water supply assessment. Those were paid. Turns out Brett was hiding the money. We got our hundred, five hundred and forty thousand, made it and admitted to it, so. Good. We're made whole there, and we have a meeting coming up with DWR, I think, in the next week or so to talk about this grant and how we plan to use it to support the rest of the roadmap projects that we're doing right now. So that's, that's exciting. There's, you know, one point four million or so of funding remaining. In terms of our Werder grant, we know that's from the environmental infrastructure portion of Werder. There's twenty-eight million dollars there. We're in a great position. It's, it's the San Francisco office's number one new start project. That's what we were told.
What does that mean, new start?
So they, they have existing projects.
I see.
That are ongoing and, you know, constantly funded, new funding for new start projects.
Gotcha.
Of course, the lack of a federal budget means that nothing is happening right now, you know, in terms of new starts. So we need that, that federal budget to go through, and then, and we'll be able to, you know, the San Francisco office, this is their, their choice for the number one new start project. So that'll be our pipeline segment discharge from Sulhuli into, into Nacasio, and then hopefully the future electrification of Sulhuli.
Imagine they're getting some encouragement from Jared Huffman.
Oh, terrific support, yeah. He, there's some link we can share if you haven't already seen it. Sean has a link where Congressman Huffman was talking specifically about this in a committee meeting. So it's really, it's really good. There's a lot of energy behind this. And we have, of course, applied for a USBR Water Smart grant in their Applied Science Program in October, again, to help fund our modeling. And this is an idea where we have, it can help us with our decision-making processes and improve our water management decisions.
Did Sonoma get that radar up and running, the new one?
It's not up and running, but there, I think it's all systems go to get it installed on Barnaby.
I was actually up there a couple of weeks ago, and you can see the construction ongoing.
Great. And then I put together sort of a budget, a project's budget, as opposed to sort of a five-year funding program, because we have a little more certainty over year to year on projects. So this is sort of a project management aspect. The first column was the budget that we, we submitted for twenty twenty-four.
Fifty cents, that's worth a while.
Yeah, these are in millions. These are really cheap, penny stocks. And then twenty twenty-four was our identified budget need. So as you, you move along and you get the quote from the consulting teams, you can find sometimes that the, the estimates that you entered with were not quite correct. And we saw that in particular on the regional conveyance, where the consulting team's estimate was nearly double what we'd asked for, what we'd anticipated. So our twenty-four budget need was a little bit higher than our budget. And we've just made some adjustments in, in the capital program, as you may have heard from Alex at some point, that there's challenges getting materials to get projects to go. And so we're going to be able to kind of just borrow from the capital fund for this year and pay it back next year. So I think things will be, will be fine in that respect. And of course, this doesn't factor in the grant money from DWR. We're just not set up right now to be able to kind of reflect that as, you know, a credit in this budget call. But we will be, you know, effectively, there's one point three million dollars of DWR money that we would, you know, apply to the five point four and the twenty-four budget need call here. And you can see our expenditures to date, which do seem, you know, as I was putting this together, they seem low in some instances. But recognizing that consulting and some of our invoicing, you know, lags by as much as, you know, forty-five days. So I think we're a little bit further along in some of these projects than the invoicing might indicate.
But Paul, on the, on the greater budget need for the Marin-Sonoma conveyance.
Yeah.
This is for, for the study that, that, that is currently underway.
For the alternative screening, yeah, and the prefered project analysis.
Do you ever feel like there's, you know, if, if you're not getting the bids that, that you had anticipated room to either push back or look for other bidders, or is, are we sort of running into the reality of the market that this is what it costs?
Yeah, so, so when we did bid the project, obviously, we reached out to a number of consultants. And with projects like this, they're going to occupy their kind of A teams for long periods of time. Consulting teams can be quite selective on the projects they take. So there is kind of a marketing aside from staff at the district to make sure these teams understand that these projects are real, that they're supported by the Board of Directors, and that there's funding for them. So that can limit your responses to an RFP, but we did a reasonably decent job. I think we got three full responses, and they were all fairly similar. I could certainly provide you the information on that. So that gives us an idea that for our, for the effort that we were looking for, that their responses were appropriate.
And Paul, I imagine when we set the budget and then the proposals came in, there were scope items we hadn't anticipated that drove it.
Good point. Okay, and next steps clues in that this is the last slide. So we're continuing to work on implementation projects, as we discussed. We're working on the screening of the conveyance and storage to propose shortlists. And the desal project will have some initial results for you, hopefully next month. We're going to continue to track, as you heard from Sean, they're continually always looking at opportunities for grants, and particularly looking at roadmap support for implementation. And then we'll be back to the board with routine and frequent updates on different aspects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I just want to say thank you and acknowledge the thoroughness of this report. It's very helpful as we move now, almost a year since we approved the water supply study. I'm really excited to see the conveyance and storage projects. I think they've done their shortlist. I just want to make sure I ask on the conveyance piece that we continue to value redundancy into the system when we're moving items towards a shortlist as part of the scoring period, independently of the cost.
You know, Paul, I think when, when the results of the strategic water supply roadmap study really pushed us to consider a portfolio-based approach to addressing our water resilience. And it's encouraging to see that we're moving forward on the many, on the different aspects that we prioritize to establish that full portfolio. And thanks a lot for this update. It's, it's probably the item that we think about the most, I think, as a district, and it's always good to see that progress is moving forward. I hope you'll keep us updated on, in, when there are unexpected delays or, or challenges which are going to be, you know, invariably are going to happen, so that we're we're really, we're staying on top of those challenges. I think one specific item is, when you think about all the variables we'll have to consider with, when we make a decision about conveyance and storage, I'm guessing that coordination with our partners and potentially even providing benefits or advantages to our regional partners in this effort, you know, the other contractors that rely on Sonoma Water could be an important variable for consideration. I'm assuming that that's part of the equation that's, that, that you're, you're putting together, but just wanted, you didn't say much about that, so.
Yeah, so the strategy aspects, we don't generally talk about, you know, it's sort of keeping your cards close to your chest and your powder dry in a way, but you're right, absolutely. There is, of course, a strategy that we have, in addition to just, just the engineering, science, environmental, and cost policy considerations. There is that, that whole aspect to it as well. So you're, you're a hundred percent on the mark.
It, it is a good point. Some of these projects definitely provide an avenue for more regional benefit than others. And that will be a key consideration. And, right, what, what we're talking about is bringing these kind of thirteen options on conveyance and similar on storage down to three to shortlist to do the pre-design work. I just want to assure the board, you'll be deeply involved in that process of the shortlisting in the months ahead.
Okay. I'll just say thank you again, Paul. And I think to Ranjiv's point, this is obviously something that we're paying a lot of attention to, and, and, and as are many of our customers who, who wanted to see us take these steps and are tracking. And so the, I know that we do this on a regular basis, and I think it's quarterly that we've talked about having these updates. Let's make sure that we, we keep that regular schedule so that other folks can, you know, in the community can plan to attend and pay attention, because this is a, this is a really important item that we want to make sure we come back with. And, and truly too, if we're running into unexpected problems, we want to know about that and be forthright about that. And, you know, and if we have slips in schedule, which often happen with so many projects, and there are, there are a lot of unknowns. There's no perfect crystal ball to look out five years. When you're doing investigative studies, you know, to not, to assume you're going to know exactly what you are going to run into. So we expect that, but we just would love to know about that, and so we can be responsive. So thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, public comment?
Yes, we have public comment. First one is Mr. Phil Sauter.
Thanks very much for the presentation. Every time I see the roadmap, it keeps getting better. It seems that there are several underlying assumptions in the, in the roadmap that may not be valid. These assumptions are not explicit, but they're implicit in some of the elements of the roadmap. Some of the external sources being, for supply being considered are of lower quality than the water currently produced by our watershed and require higher levels of treatment to make them potable. I think we're making an assumption that customers would be okay with that. Some of the external sources are expensive and some require large capital investments, which will show up as fixed costs on our water bills for years to come. I think we're making an assumption that customers won't mind paying those increased fixed costs, even as most customers are using the same or lower amounts of water, and I'm not sure that assumption's true. Based on indoor use currently at about fifty gallons per capita per day, I think, Marin Water has enough supply to last double the two years' supply we believe we currently have. That means the search for additional water is not for indoor use, but rather to support using potable water for outdoor irrigation. We seem to be assuming that the majority of our customers will accept changes in water quality and/or treatment levels, so that a minority of our customers can use more than half of our potable water outdoors. I don't think that's a good assumption. We're also assuming that we can wait until twenty twenty-four, twenty forty-five to reach a daily savings of four million gallons of water through conservation. I think it would be good to see an alternative assumption that we may not have that long until we have to adapt to a new, a new reality. It seems pretty clear that water quality, water It seems pretty clear that water quality, water supply, water use and water cost are all interrelated and that supply and use may be inversely correlated with quality and cost. It also seems that what's good for a minority of customers with heavy outdoor water use may not be good for the majority of customers who want to maintain high-quality water at more affordable prices. At some point, I think it will make sense to look at supply alternatives through this lens and make a strong commitment to potable water quality and affordability. I think Director Russ will put it very succinctly. It's a quality versus quantity issue. Of course, in, in my opinion, conservation of potable water is one source of supply that threads the needle very, very well and does away with many of those contradictions. And it's why I'll continue to advocate for keeping conservation at the top of our list of water supply options. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. There are no further speakers.
Okay. Well, thank you all. And with that, we have the next meeting on the 16th of February. I'm likely going to be at Flint testifying at that time. It, it may slide a little bit. The trial starts on the 13th. So I may need your help there. I'll let you know what it looks like. It may be the next week that I have to go to Flint. So in any case, thank you all. And look forward to the future.